So.
We're now live.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July meeting of our planning working group. This meeting is preceded by a public session and Mr Stephen Smith is here. He'd like to address the committee on access to Ozie Way, I believe.
There's not only access to Ozie Way, it's also to do with the Tindric Road and problems on the Tindric Road, again to do with access.
Thank you. The floor is yours. You have 15 minutes.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. As you are well aware, I'm one of the disabled members of the community. And I've been basically going on my normal walks with my guide dog. And on those walks, I've come across some, let's say, potentially dangerous parts of Buckingham. In particular, the Tindric Road, where they're doing the new developments. The things I've discovered on the Tindric Road include a section of pavement which is approximately two feet wide, which is just up from the children's, basically where they used to have the nursery. So the section between there and the roundabout is, let's just say, dangerous for anybody with a pushchair, mobility scooter, or anything of that sight, or anybody who's partially sighted. But there's also a problem with a lack of lighting. There's no lighting at all on that section of road. So if anybody's going up and down there, who's not visually impaired, is also going to have problems at certain parts of the day. And there's also the fact that as people are now using that as a sort of a rat run, because they can get up to the roundabout at very high speeds and they can get off the roundabout at very high speeds. The actual speeds that are going up and down on that road are, I was going to say, somewhat frightening. Not only for people in my particular circumstances, but also for people who are jogging along the pavement. And the vehicles are causing such a vacuum. Not only have I noticed that the dog is being pulled in towards the road, but also people are saying that they're being pulled in towards the road. Furthermore, on that, there's no dropped pavement edges. And generally speaking, the whole area where they're currently doing the development is, I wouldn't say it's correctly signposted as being potentially dangerous, even though there are heavy vehicles going in and out on that end of the road. That, together with the amount of greenery and shrubbery that's actually growing out into the road, such as briar, et cetera, is potentially dangerous for anybody who's on there. That's just the Tindric Road. So I was hoping that somebody could bring us up in a meeting regarding looking at reducing speed restrictions on that section of road. Obviously, sort of scaling it down from 50, 40, 30, et cetera. Or even possibly putting adequate crossing points on the road, dropping curbs, so people can actually come with their pushchairs, mobility scooters, et cetera, and safely cross the road on there. That's just the Tindric Road. Now, Ozie Way, which was discussed in a meeting, I think it was about two weeks ago, which I'm rather late on coming back to you all on. Again, we've got several issues on there. Again, no drop curbs. Vehicles are coming off the roundabout at very high speeds. There's nowhere for people who have disabilities like myself to be able to sort of go. There's nowhere for mobility scooters to be able to go. If somebody actually wanted to come up to Ozie Way to address one of the council meetings, and they're disabled, how would they get there? And again, there's no adequate places for crossing. The lighting's not as good as it could be. So it's a similar sort of situation. And bearing in mind that Buckingham is expanding. We have developments possibly going on Ozie Way. We have developments going on the Tindric Road. The infrastructure just isn't there. So these are the points I was bringing up to you this evening and hopefully will be discussed in the rest of the planning meeting. So that's where I'm coming from. Is there anything you'd like to ask me? I'm more than happy to put more details on things.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Yeah, I will just answer your Tindric Road queries first. Tindric Road lighting, councillor Harvey has led on this and we have requested that there be lighting. Accelerate installation of lighting between St Rumbold's Fields and Westfields. We have written twice now to Buckinghamshire Council. It is on the action list tonight. And also on the action list tonight is the speed reduction in Tindric Road. We're requesting a 30 mile an hour limit between the new estate and the town centre and also looking at the possibility of making it 40 from the roundabout to the start of the estate. So it's not a sudden dropping off from 50 down to 30, which the highways authorities are not that keen on. Regarding Ozie Way, our planning clerk Catherine may correct me. I think the consultation period is now finished. There's 120 comments on there. I did have a look. I didn't see that you'd commented on the.
I wasn't aware of it being available, so I wasn't able to comment on it.
It has been since early June. We have made our response against it, the principal one being it's outside the Buckingham neighbourhood plan. And until the Vale of Aylesby Plan is made sometime in the future, we're still the dominant plan. There would be another chance presumably to address this, but we can take note of what you've said, particularly about the access, particularly for people with disabilities. And so thank you for those points. But if any member tonight would like to ask Stephen a question, we can't actually discuss what you've said tonight, Stephen, except where it comes up on the minutes. So the Ozie Way we can't discuss, but we can discuss further the Tindric Road issues.
Just to say, Stephen, thank you for coming. The lighting issue is in a mix of correspondence with officers. I'm still waiting for the responses on a flooding issue from the officer to do with that area. Seems to be a slow return on emails on those elements. So if you want to write to me, copy the town clerk into those concerns, I will take your concerns up to do with the Tindric Road particularly. Because my understanding is at some point with developments on both sides, it will naturally have to come into formity. Now, at the moment, the officer doesn't seem to be answering, so he's on his last email before it goes to cabinet. So so I think that we do need to do need to follow up. On the Ozie Way thing, I did have met the the officer regards to that development. I have talked through many aspects of it and I have given a written response to my concerns, which did include some of your concerns the other day. It took a little while for we were able to meet as local members. So eventually we did have that meeting. So that was a frank meeting and she's got those details. I'm hoping they're up on the website by now because she said she was going to put them there. So but we are following these things up. The town council, I think as a whole of us, we want all these things put right. Unfortunately, it's Buckinghamshire Council, which is the planning authority.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else would like to ask anything of Mr Smith? Councillor Harvey, John?
Yeah, just say thanks as well from me for coming along, Stephen. It's good to hear your attention has been drawn to lots of issues that we've highlighted here at the town council as well. And yes, the lighting and the speed limits, something we'll come back to later on in the meeting. So thanks again for coming along.
Thank you. Can I ask just a general question while I'm here as well? The traffic lights on Ozie Way, they are not designed for people with disabilities in mind. Unless you actually know that underneath where you actually activate the lights, there's a small divide which turns. Most blind people would not know, most blind people who are older than me would not know that's there. So because the lights are not audible, so they can't hear when the lights have changed, that also causes a possible problem on those lights, which is crossing over to Ozie Way from obviously the Emerton Road side of things.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll ask Catherine if she could please make a note of that and see if we can follow that through. Well, thank you very much for attending. You may wish to stay on there, Stephen, because I saw an action list which comes up quite quickly. We will be discussing progress on the street lighting and the speed reduction. So we now officially start the meeting then. Members are asked to receive apologies. Louise.
Councillor Gateley, councillor O'Donoghue, and apologies for lateness from councillor Mochi.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest, received declarations of any personal or prejudicial interest under consideration on items on the agenda. No declarations tonight. Thank you. Item three, minutes of the planning working group that's held on Monday 28th of June. Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, I'd like to propose a small change to the minutes of the last meeting. Let me just call them up here. I think in the minute it says on page one, public session, councillor White refuted comments, blah, 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 blah. I think it ought to say councillor White sought to refute comments made in the public session. Because obviously, you know, without evidence either way, something can't be refuted. And if there were ever to be any legal action or whatever, the council could be drawn into that by asserting that something was refuted when it wasn't. So I think sought to refute would be a better way of putting it. And actually, that represents a closer description of what actually happened, I think.
Yeah, I mean, he did actually refute things that had been said at the previous meeting. So perhaps we could ask advice of our town clerk, Paul?
I just, councillor Harvey does make a good point. Sought to refute is neutral in terms of minoting comments, which did cover a range of issues. So for us to minute it as councillor White refuted, it implies that he completely refuted everything, but actually it was a comment in a public session, so not something that we could take as the council didn't agree or disagree either way. So sought to would be safer for the council in terms of wording.
Thank you. Follow up in agreement with that? Thank you.
Well, councillor Stutchby had a hand.
Sorry, I didn't see that. Robin? You're muted. You're muted, Robin.
John makes a very good point and I'm happy that if those changes are going to be accepted. Sought to refute is better. We're not, you know, if it's not, it was a long statement now abbreviated to one line. So that's a blessing. But I think, as suggested, and the town clerk is willing to recognise that, these are our minutes of the committee. They're not anyone's members' minutes. So if that's accepted, I think that's a very sensible and reasonable way to go forward.
Thank you, Robin. Everyone, I think, is in agreement with that. Thank you. Item four, Buckingham neighbourhood plan, Vale of Aylesby Plan. Any update, Paul?
No, we do need to arrange the working group. We've been struggling with dates between the different staff members being off. So we'll get something out to book that working group as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. You may be aware, some of you, that there has been a letter sent to councillor Martin Tett, who's leader of Buckinghamshire Council, by consortium of parishes and the Buckingham Society, Ledlo Ridge by Maidsmorton, Foscat Group, Winslow Residents Association, RISBA Residents Association, Hampden Fields Action Group and Borne and Green, who have raised issues about planning in Buckinghamshire, which obviously a lot of this is aimed towards the Vale of Aylesby Plan and it's things they don't think are suitable in it. Accountability, greater weight being given to parishes. Many, many things like this. They've sent this letter asking for basically towns and parishes to be given more recognition in the planning process. We have had a copy of the letter sent to us by Kate Pride. We will circulate it after the meeting, but anyone who'd like to have a word on that, councillor Harvey?
I'm prepared to open a book on whether the Valp is going to be withdrawn within the next few months. Because I think it's going to be. I think it's heading for the rubbish bin. Because my bones tell me that the planning inspector is going to throw out Maidsmorton development. And when that happens, then the rest of Valp will fold like a pack, like a house of cards. And I don't think the new council will want to be trying to resurrect it at that point and will simply be focusing on the new Buckinghamshire White Plan. That's my prediction. We'll see what happens.
Thank you, John. Robin?
Yeah, I was circulated with the letter, chairman, and I read the very full letter. I also was talking to someone on the Hampden Fields group today, in an ex-councillor of our district council, ex-cabinet member today. He was one of the signatures, one of the people involved in knowing about that letter. This letter has gone widely across Buckinghamshire and many of the organisations on it are are good organisations across Buckinghamshire. It's a genuine concern. It's representing a genuine view over and above the the long journey of the Vale of Aylesby Plan, which surely the policies which were made in 2014 probably bear no reflection to 2021. I think a reasonable person would imagine that in that period of years, that life may have marched on a little bit since we first sat down in the district council and failed to get the first one through, or the second one. So I don't know what's going to happen with the Vale of Aylesby. And I can imagine that we'll hear some announcement in the misty dips of summer, as we dip into autumn. But from a personal point of view, there's many things wrong with the Vale of Aylesby Plan anyway. And it continues challenge to local plans, period. Maybe if it did go, a proper plan could be got up and done. But what happens in the interim is is there is no plan, only the 2004 plan, which as we all know has got very weak policies in now and they are really historic policies. But then I think I'm advised that you have to go to the MPF, MFP or MPF then for planning things. So we're basically going to be in a difficult situation, whatever happens. So let's not be careful what we wish for. It may be worse than what we get. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else want to speak on that? No, thank you, Paul, for that update. Item five is action reports. We've got two or three items on here we need to look at. Well, first of all, let's start with street lighting on Tindric Road. Accelerating installation of the lighting between St Rumbold's Fields and Westfields. Anything to report yet, Catherine?
I haven't had a response to the letter. I don't know if Paul has. Letters are sent by Paul, you see, so that they answer to come back to him.
Thank you, everyone. And the speed reduction in Tindric Road requesting a 30 mile limit between the state and town centre. It's been done, but presumably nothing further yet, Catherine?
No.
No. Robin?
Can I please have a copy of that correspondence? I think that it was sent a good period ago, if Paul corrects me. I think it wasn't the last meeting. It may have been the meeting before that. So please can I have copies of that correspondence? I need to take that up on a personal note. A a council like Buckingham should be responded to, and we should be responded to appropriately. And and those answers are important. They're about the future of town. So if I can have those emails, I will chase them.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Catherine. By Pass Bridge, we have had some further correspondence with Transport for Bucks about this. Robin, I know, has been dealing with them personally. If you could update us on that, Robin?
Well, firstly, chairman, it wasn't a great response. It was, let's say, a less than useful response. It suggests that it wasn't worse in any other road. The potholes weren't worse, but we do know one of our ex-mayors and previous councillors, councillor Ruth Neil, had 200 pounds worth of damage done to a vehicle crossing that, as the chairman pointed out to me in some correspondence the other day. So I don't know where we go with this. I think we do need to probably make a council press release around this because this is a major road. I think the chairman, I copied the chairman into the correspondence because it was the chairman who asked me to follow it up. I think if the chairman furbished the town clerk with that correspondence and the committee with it, I think we do need to make a press release about our concerns around this. Vehicles are being damaged. Throw in tarmac into a failing road service isn't a repair. And they didn't answer, apart from it's on a road programme and may get done at some point in the future. I don't think the chairman's concerns were adequately expressed in that email. And if he just, I don't think he'll disagree with me, but I think considering he'd followed it up on Fix My Streets on numerous occasions, including myself, I think to say that it's no worse than every other bit of road, it's basically it said, this is a main arterial route to the coast. This isn't a country lane. It has thousands of vehicles across it every day. So it's being treated as a lane. Perhaps they've got so used to patch and runaway, which is having to happen with HS2, that they're having to throw tarmac in too many holes on HS2 and haven't really got the resources to deal with the main routes. That could be the problem. But that's not for the officer to respond to, to decide. I think we need to do some media around this because if the bridge fails and for any reason they have to shut that road, that would be quite a problem for the residents in the area of the traffic circulating, I would suggest. But the chairman's done his best. I've done the correspondence and I'm a bit unhappy.
Thank you, Robin. I know you have written to me again with my comments, so perhaps we'll just wait till we hear back and then take it from there. Anyone else, anything on the action list at the moment? I have got one, which is on the second page, Two Mallard Drive. Unauthorized French fence enclosing public land. Enforcement gave the applicant the chance to submit a retrospective planning application, which has not yet appeared on the portal. There's been no application for this property since 2019, which was for extension, but Catherine does make the point that sometimes can take three or four days for an application to arrive. So the deadline is actually tomorrow. So we'd need to revisit that perhaps next month. Enforcement say if they don't submit an application or if it's refused, the council will then have to decide whether or not it's expedient to take enforcement action. So that one remains in the balance. Item six, Warnup Drive. Catherine has done a very good analysis of changes made since the June version. This is the so-called final document. We have still find it is strewn with errors and many things that we have asked for have not been done in this. Just to, I'm going to hand this one over to councillor Ralph for a moment because North Bucks Planning, Parkers Planning Consortium has gone to Buckinghamshire Council, asking for more involvement in 106 agreements. Anthony? Yeah, you're muted.
It was the excitement of being called. Thank you. I was saying, just a little tiny bit of background, I was due to go to a meeting of the MBPPC at the back end of June, but due to some technical difficulties, they had to abandon the meeting and put it on the next week. Unfortunately, I was in Cornwall that week, so I wasn't able to go. Nevertheless, I've had the minutes and also the correspondence. And in fact, it was discussing the new homes bonus consultation that triggered this. And as the MBPPC had not been consulted in any way, shape or form by Buckinghamshire Council, it was sold as a letter to the council expressing our concerns should be sent. And although councillor Hardcastle from Maidsmorton was going to sound out councillor White and also councillor Smedley was going to contact councillor Chilva, I haven't actually heard anything about that. Nevertheless, it was agreed a letter should be sent, which the secretary sent, very nice letter, very courteous, explaining everything. And it was sent to councillor Bowles, who seemed to be the appropriate person, who promptly sent a one-line email back saying, oh, I've passed it to planning. So we're not really, any of us getting much respect when it comes to liaising. I seem to remember something about a charter or something where we were all going to work collectively, but perhaps I'm mistaken.
Okay, Anthony. Councillor Stutchby?
Yeah, I am really sorry to hear councillor Anthony Ralph's statement. Please, can I see the letter which was sent to councillor Steve Bowles? I believe the letter needs to go to councillor, the cabinet member Gareth Williams. Because the idea that we shouldn't be responding on this and we know what happened with Laisir when we weren't involved in the section 106. And we know how hard we had to work to be involved in the Tindric Road estate. So we don't need to, on a personal Buckingham thing, have any more of these things going forward. And if whatever the decision may or may not be on Ozie Way, there's still a consideration of section 106 on Ozie Way, which councillors need to be able to comment on through offices. So if I can have a copy of that email, I'll take that up.
Thank you, Robin. So then return to the actual final 106 document. I hope you've all had a chance to read what Catherine wrote. Has anyone got any comments on that? Or are you all in agreement? And is it your wish we send it to the appropriate cabinet member? Asking for this to be revised as requested? Yep. Everyone in agreement with that? Catherine, do you want to add anything to that?
And while I was going to turn the comments into the form of a letter and send the table. But if members have got anything they wish to add, you know, that would be handy now.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you, Anthony, for that email. We work very quick on Buckingham Town Council. We can get emails like speed alike.
Right, for that, planning applications then. So for your information, the next scheduled North Buckinghamshire Planning Area Committee meetings are Wednesdays, August 11th and the 1st of September. Strategic Site Committees are on Thursdays, the 29th of July and the 26th of August. Going through the applications tonight, then, we've just got five and a tree. Let's just get those up. Right. So the first one is Royal Latin School, Chandos Road. The proposal is to install a new heating system at the Brookfield Building, replacing gas boilers with air source heat pumps. They'll be located in Watwada Greenhouse. They're surrounded by school buildings, so there's no neighbours. The only noise they make, as Catherine noted, is similar to air conditioning noises. So how do members feel about this? John?
I think not for the like, really. This is obviously part of their decarbonisation programme in the school. It fits very much with our aspirations for reducing carbon and tackling the, well, the very hot climate crisis that we're currently experiencing. So rock on, is what I would say. Fantastic.
Thank you. Anthony?
Thank you, Chair. I wonder whether we might drop a line to Royal Latin and ask when they've had this installation completed. They might let us have some information on how successful it is going forward and so that we have, over the coming months, obviously, some idea of the efficacy of this sort of kit. And it would be good knowledge for us to have going forward.
Yeah, and perhaps at the same time, command them on the initiative. Yep. Yeah, thank you, John.
Yeah, just one small thing, though. The information that Catherine copied across included the phrase, if I can just find it, bear with me a second, something about heat from where the fluid passes through a compressor. My basic physics says you can't compress a fluid, but it sounds intriguing to me. But if that's how it works, that's great.
I'm Trust Energy Saving UK to know more than I do about this.
Everyone's happy with that. Thank you. The next item is 38 King Fisher Road. That's a single-storey rear and side extension on the Badgers Estate. This is almost backing on, isn't it, to the.
Just to say, chairman, I'm abstaining on that. We weren't all happy.
Okay, thank you, Robin.
I'll abstain on all the planning applications coming forward tonight, so that makes it easier for you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Don't keep interrupting, yeah?
Right. So this is just basically filling in between the house and the garage and behind. Quite a neat extension. Any members got any views on this? Councillor Harvey, John?
Again, I think this is something we shouldn't object to. It seems like a proportionate development of the house to make it more livable for those who occupy it. So again,
So again, no objections from me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Everyone agreement with that? Thank you, no objections then. Um, item three, Home Appliances. This is the old telephone exchange uh behind the postal sorting office. Part change of use to the ground floor um from mixed storage workshop to and flat, retail to three flats and the extension and alterations to the building above to provide seven flats. So the the idea is two storeys are going to be put on top of this building. Um, councillor Harvey?
Um, I've got mixed views about this. I think generally speaking, I think I would register as no objections, but I'm keen to hear what other people say. But can we make it a condition that the really tired-looking um A-frame board, whatever that's at the front of the um um of the uh the sorting office is removed? Because it looks really awful there. I'll sell off that to answer my Covid, sorry.
Thank you. Carolyn, Buckingham Society?
Yes, we have quite a lot to say about this. So um we do rather object to the current proposal, certainly. Um, as you know, Ed Grimsdale is is of the view that this is one of the few uh post-early pre-war buildings in Buckingham and has some um status as such. But um that apart, that this hybrid solution of putting a very modern extension onto a a rather inadequate base, it's apparently single thin brick work, uh is is not the right answer. From a design point of view, you think it's uh wrong, but from uh the the building regulations point of view, it's probably disastrous. Also, we think there's a main internet cable running right the way through the post office yard, which would be interesting if that failed. Um, and actually, I think Catherine pointed out the difference in height levels is very problematic uh for to bring access from the back. But equally, access from the front through an impossible narrow channel onto the high street for nine flats is just unacceptable. And I think we're right in saying that the post office closed the gates on that access at um 5:30 or 6 o'clock. So these practicalities apart, um, no, it's not the right solution for that site. We feel the answer to unlocking that site is probably through the back, but um I gather there's a ransom strip along the back of the modern telephone exchange uh that might make that rather impossible. But certainly to access it from the from the high street is wrong. To to offer a hybrid solution of a modern development onto an adequately built base is completely unacceptable. So that was uh very much our objections to to this application.
Thank you, Carolyn. Now Catherine did make the point um that there are a number of errors in the application, particularly in the the design statement. They they claim it's a 1950s building. It's actually 1939. It's of historic interest because it was the last public works building to be built before World War II. And Ed Grimsdale is very hot on this. You'll notice Catherine has included Ed's quote from the last time this application came up and Ed is quite happy for us to use that again. Um, there's concern, of course, over the cladding they're talking about. It's grey aluminium. Uh, there's no report if it's fireproof. I mean, we have to think grand foul here. There's no fire risk assessment in the application. There's no disabled um component to the building about getting in and out. There's not enough bin space, as Catherine points out. Parking access, thank you, Carolyn, yes, that's, that is a difficult one. Um, there's no comments from the post office. Have the post office been consulted about uh cars driving late at night through the middle of their parked vans in the sorting office? There's a big security issue. Also flooding. There are three manholes on this site, all of which have been underwater when there's been high flooding. And the cabling, as you say, Carolyn, that that's some, a a very big issue because they're going to have to dig up to put water and sewers in because uh we know there's not enough sewers to cope with this. We know there's not enough water supply. And the other thing, of course, nothing from Thames Valley Police Crime Prevention Officer about this. As Catherine again has pointed out, you've got chain-linked fencing almost touching some of the balconies. So easy for Spider-Man to climb up and onto the balconies and uh and do his worst. So all these things um from Catherine's report tend to go against it, but it's up to members to decide if you agree with um Carolyn and the Buckingham Society. But uh cer- certainly, the building is of historic interest and as the um archaeological officer for Buckinghamshire Council put in her report, the site is located within an area of archaeological significance, although she notices no groundwork um proposed to the site, save for the provision of those improved utilities. What do members feel about this? Yep.
I think we oppose, Chair.
Right, thank you, councillor Ralph. I think we might need a second on this because this is obviously, thank, he's seconding our councillor try. Thank you. Do you want to speak on it, Martin?
Um, I I was, oh, am I crackly?
No.
No, okay, sorry. Um, I'm getting some bad feedback here. I'll carry on. Yes, I I am opposed to it. I think the parking, um, the, well, as Carolyn said, the the reuse of that sort of building um and my favourite with the bins, um, doesn't quite all match up, really. I'm not too worried about the cladding personally, but um all the other points that um have been put forward, I think, are are valid, especially um surface water, which we really should take into account quite strongly nowadays. So, uh, yes, I'm happy to uh second the um proposal to oppose.
Thank you. So anyone else wish to speak or we put it to the vote? Right, all those um in favour of oppose and attend?
Um, councillor Davies had a hand up, Chairman. Councillor Fran Davies had a hand up.
Oh, that's it now, Fran, apologies.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, I I I um read through all the um the paperwork that um very kindly done by Catherine. Um, I I believe that the um the access to the site um is insufficient. It's it's a single um carriageway or a single, a single width um driveway down there. Um, the um having having driven down there and parked on various occasions, um access on to um coming out of there, um the um vision play, vision um to to actually get out there and onto the high street is insufficient. Um, it's um crossing a very busy, busy piece of pavement to do so. Um, as was also noted, um the the post office um closes their gates um at certain times, um which is obviously for security reasons. I mean, like, how many times have um have we had robberies, et cetera, at post offices? Um, it is, it is their sorting office. Um, it's, I would be interested to find out who actually owns that piece of land, the driveway that they're proposing access over. Um, and, yeah, I can't, I can't see any way of of gaining access um the back because of the um the the difference in height. Um, having gone up the lane on other other occasions to um collect and deliver from um from Clay's back entrance, um I I know how difficult it is ga- gaining access up that um that particular way from Cornwall's Mede. So I I would definitely be opposed to it on um on those grounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
I ask a question, Chairman. I'm not going to vote or comment on it, only that I would be very grateful if um a line could further me with the details over if there's maps and stuff over the internet, because I think I'd want to understand that fully. Um, i- it is important. Um, um, I won't comment on the application, but I do need to understand that.
Thank you. So we've got a list that Catherine obviously is aware of and we've got a proposal in second. Are all those in favour of opposing and attending? Thank you.
One, two, three, four.
Four, those against? Extensions? Two.
Two extensions.
Sorry, Andy, which way are you voting? You're muted at the moment, Andy. That's it.
Can't hear you. No, definitely can't hear you. It says you're not muted, but.
Do us a, yeah.
If you're voting in favour of the proposal, we oppose and attend, please raise your hand. Okay, that makes. That gives you, is it Paul? Yeah, um, two extensions. Thank you. Um, of course, we don't need to ask a member to call it in now, do we? We we do it ourselves as from July the 1st. Um, item four is number nine, Addington Road. This is going up the steep part of that, first part of Addington Road on the right-hand side. It's a two-story rear extension and alterations to front elevation. This property backs on to the um Maids Morton Drive Woods. It's got the um the old gravel pits right behind it and the the cadet huts. Um, they are looking to increase from three to four bedrooms. The main problem here is likely to be that AVDC parking standards, which have now been adopted by Buckinghamshire Council, state that four or more bedrooms should provide three off-street parking spaces. Well, there are none at all at the moment. So I'd like to speak on this. Carolyn? And then, John?
Yes, but we 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 also identified the parking problem, it really interests us. Um, and and I don't, we didn't think of any way around it. There is simply no parking off off-street for Addington Road at that, at that particular juncture. And I haven't seen any comments from neighbours, but we did wonder whether there might be some objection to um the the extension coming absolutely flush with the with the hedge boundary. But I, the principle of the extension, we didn't quarrel with it, it was just that with the parking restrictions, it it would appear to be not, just not possible.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yes, I can answer your question. There is one um neighbour opposed to it, the next-door neighbour, Mrs Janice Price at 11 Addington Road. Uh, she said, this property is adjacent to my home and if this extension was added, I'd have a very dark home inside as it block all the light coming in through my windows and I'd have views of brick walls. I've lived here for over 30 years and strongly object to this extension. Uh, it is a valid objection because it's, it would be taking her light. So, John, you were next?
Yeah, I've looked at this and I and I know the backs of these houses from, you know, from the the woods behind. Um, it does seem with the drawing that that Catherine has, you know, extracted and put up, is that it is taking over a large portion of the of the of of the back garden. I know they go back quite a way, but nonetheless, it's going to possibly damage a cherry tree and be as wide as the house. Now, these are terrace houses. Um, and I'm not sure therefore whether the Party Wall Act comes into action here as well um and whether it's legitimate to have an extension that wide when you're a a terrace house. So having looked through it all, I I think my view is that this feels like overdevelopment um in what is clearly a very tight um space. Um, and I think some means needs to be found to reduce the impact of that. Um, and there is the issue of parking. I mean, there are some car parking spaces up the road, but they're not allocated. Um, of course, they're just there for people to use. Um, so I I I think I would probably suggest that we object to this.
Thank you. Um, if I could just ask Catherine if if we need to correct you on that. You said they're terrace houses. They're actually semi-detached houses and this is one of the pair, nine and 11.
No, sorry, I better, my apologies.
Thank you, okay. Um, the other point Catherine's raised in her report is the cherry tree, a four-metre-high cherry tree in the back garden. There's no indication of what might happen to that. And uh cherries are normally very pretty trees and we 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 can't see this one, obviously, um because it's behind the houses. So would members also want want to know what what they're intending to do about the cherry tree? Because it's going to be quite close to the property, uh to the extension. Yeah, now John has proposed um that we object to this. We have a seconder? Sorry, I'm sorry, Fran, I keep missing your your hand up in the corner. We're not, we're not used to these um, these emojis.
Thank you, sorry. Um, I was, I was going to say. Getting feedback. I was going to say similar to John, really. Um, but the um the plans that we've got here don't um show what percentage of the of the garden is actually being taken up by it. It does, it would, could appear from from these drawings that it's actually two-thirds of the garden. Um, so I'd I'd quite like to know how much of it it actually is. But it's, and not only the cherry trees, there's a Leylandai hedge, isn't there? Um, whether that hedge is, belongs to that property or belongs to the neighbour, um, it doesn't say. I think I think the the hedge to the um the right, so the party wall side, looks like it's the neighbour's hedge and that 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 could also be impacted.
Yeah, Catherine, can you?
They're digging footings down.
Yeah, there is a diagram on page 15 showing the back and the garden with the cherry tree and hedges. Can you, uh, clarify that, Catherine?
Yes, the the hedge on the right of the um right-hand drawing, as you look at it, is definitely the neighbour's hedge. And John is quite right that the the wall goes up to the boundary, which it shouldn't. The hedge on the left that runs underneath the cherry tree is theirs, but it will, I mean, the extension will actually overlap front of that, which will mean you've got to fight through the hedge and not get into the back garden. Um, there isn't a decent block plan with that application, but if you look at it, it's actually slight, about half as much again as the original, the the plan that I listed from AVDC's, hang on a minute, website on page 13, um because sometimes you have to do that. If you imagine that half as much again of the house is shown, so they have still got quite a lot of garden. And of course, it does back on to the woodland ransom. So. But the orientation of it means that the 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 extension will shade number 11, which is the one to the top of it, the the other half of the semi.
Thank you. So, John, you've made a proposal. We'd have a seconder? Yeah, thank you, Martin. So all those in favour of opposing and attending?
Three, four, five, six.
Extensions, just, uh, as Fran as well, have you counted Fran?
Yes.
Yep, and one extension, thank you.
Right. Can I say, this will be an interesting test of whether we can now call this in ourselves as a town council.
Yeah, we're doing that with the previous one as well, Home Appliances.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, item five, site of Formant 61 Morton Road. This is a variation of approved drawings of planning permission. Bungalow was demolished. We opposed um the development of the site on the grounds of parking spaces wouldn't be big enough for them to turn off the Maids, clear of the Maids, sorry, of Morton Road. Um, and also because of the closeness of the development, as it's now no longer a bungalow but a two-story building to the next-door neighbour. Those were both um answered by Buckinghamshire Planning when they did the original, or AVDC as it was, when they did the original um approval for that, saying that the parking was not materially different from the existing layout. And they said that the additional story would not detrimentally affect them, I mean, to the neighbours because it was partially a cat slide roof. Um, they've now come back with a quite a different building and I think Carolyn may wish to speak on this.
You surmise correctly, Chairman. Yes, we we feel very strongly firstly that the variation of conditions is completely unwarranted. Um, as it stood, the design of the house did have some distinguishing features and perhaps alleviated its rather cramped position that it had between the the adjoining, well, joining so much as next-door properties. We'll leave the parking aside aside for a moment, but undoubtedly this proposal to.
proposal to vary what is and was a relatively distinguished design is completely unacceptable to us. It makes it just overbearing on its plot. And the principle, we think, of actually trying to alter conditions of this sort is, should be strongly refused. It just sets right the wrong precedent. We've seen it happening with so many buildings in town. Oddfellow's Hall is the one obviously springs to mind. Conditions are there to be kept to. And every time they've tried to vary it, weary us all with these extra applications. And they get away with it, and they should not get away with it. It's a design that was approved reluctantly perhaps by some, but it did have some features about it that made it acceptable. The current one does not.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Anyone else like to speak on this? John, councillor Harvey?
Yeah, just to back up what Carolyn's just said. I think this has gone from being an interesting building to being something very boring. And, you know, the, in a sense mitigated some of the problems with it. But having taken all that stuff away, as I say, as Carolyn says, it's just become a rather large, overbearing building and kind of dominate the bungalow next door to it. So I don't know whether that gives us sufficient grounds to object to these changes, but I'm not happy with it.
So try.
Thank you. This is not an amendment. This is a complete change to the application and the site drawing. So, you know, we need to we need to oppose it so that they can go back to the drawing board. And then maybe they can come back with something suitable in the in the make-up of the building and in a proper way that they can park their cars.
Thank you. I know that Catherine did say within the, in her comments that we cannot challenge that. That's a given now, I think, Catherine, isn't it?
Well, it's the same footprint and all they're doing is tiddling with design details, you see, of an original approval. It is a different owner, obviously, who obtained the planning permission, have sold it on with planning permission to this new company. And they've decided that a bog-standard roof and bog-standard windows are...
Yeah. Right. It's so much brick, isn't there, facing the road?
I agree. It's not as nice a building, and it would be better if they scrapped the whole thing and started again, frankly, with a a smaller building further from the, it's the closeness to the house just below it on the hill, which is also two-storeies. And this one will have a two-storey wall a certain way. It's not you know, it's too close. Before, when they had the varied roof, it might have been excusable.
Yeah.
But...
Thank you. Martin?
Thank you. So when is minor amendments, not a minor amendment, I mean, just because it's on the same plot of land, they've changed the materials. It is very close and adjacent to the conservation area as well. So I know it's not in the conservation area, but we have to take that into account because it is, you know, within spitting distance of the conservation area. I don't know. This, to my mind, this is not acceptable.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, we, you say amendments. Of course, what it says on the actual application is variation. But it's the same difference, isn't it? So, so Martin, you're proposing that we, you have a proposal, we oppose and attend, haven't you? And maybe we have a seconda for that? Councillor Ralph, thank you. Right. Anyone else wish to speak? All those in favour then of opposing and attending?
Two, three, four, five, six.
Full house. Thank you. Robin abstaining, of course. Thank you very much. That concludes the planning applications, but there is a tree application which we have already Catherine already consulted. It's the, an oak tree to the rear of twenty-five Pitchford Avenue, and it's in the hollow way. It's really just tidying up a tree, removing a tagline, cleaning wound. It's being done through Neil Passmore at Buckinghamshire Council, and we registered no objection to that work. So that's just, just for the record. Planning decisions. Got those under item eight. I'm going to draw your attention to the first one on the list, which is thirty-two Bradfield Avenue. It was erection of a dwelling, and this was in, at the end of the cul-de-sac, going on to open fields in Morton, off the back of Morton Road development. We opposed it on the grounds that there was no SUDS report. And we were concerned about flooding and sewage problems. We also said we felt it is too close to the existing building. But the planning officer said that the SUDS report is not necessary, and it can be adequately dealt with by building regulations, which is fine, we can accept that. And that the proposed dwelling would have a simple form which would not, which would deflect that in the existing dwelling, dwelling. And it's considered to be sympathetic to their locality. And it's not giving rise to overdevelopment of what is a brownfield site. So with those in mind, they gave the approval. On the subject of car parking, it's only got one parking space, but they said that the sustainable location of the site, it doesn't consider this to be a reason to refuse the current application. And furthermore, parking standards are only a maximum standard. And given the location, the new dwelling at the end of cul-de-sac, there'd be no adverse impact upon the safety of operation on the highway. So when it suits them, they're not right about the parking. But I thought members should just be aware of, you know, why we'd, something we'd oppose, that was the view of the planning officers in approving it. The other items, there are fifteen market square works going on now, changing use from hairdresser to medical consulting rooms. Thank you. Item nine, Buckingham...
Sorry, John.
Sorry, John, I was looking down.
The market square. Oh, I've got the wrong thing. It's not the one with the scaffolding, is it? Outside the British, what was the...
No, no, no. This is the Barbers next to Smiths.
Okay, all right. We'll come back to the scaffolding later in the agenda then. Okay.
Under enforcement or...
Okay.
So Buckinghamshire Council members received news of Buckinghamshire Council new documents and other information from council members present. Robin is present, and Robin, you asked me to remind you about enforcement.
Yeah, I'll do that next. The, the, on Wednesday, you may be aware that I'll be taking motion with my colleague, councillor Stuart Wilson, councillor in South of Buckinghamshire, to challenge the Cambridge Arc. You will be aware that the Cabinet took a decision to withdraw from the spatial arc grouping. But it seems right to regularise the fact that the members should be against the development of the Cambridge Arc. You will be aware that this is followed by the White Paper, Government White Paper, which we've discussed. And you will be aware that the Cambridge Oxford Expressway has been cancelled. So the Cambridge Arc really seems unsustainable. Now, that motion is going to council from my group, which is called Impact Alliance. We're taking that to the council to hopefully test the waters and see if we can get some connotation of what a bad idea this is for Buckinghamshire. You will all be aware, because you are aware, of what this means for us locally, is large developments could be placed anywhere across that arc, and we wouldn't have a say. So I'm seeking some connotation of that. Furthermore to that, you will remember that you asked me some time back about enforcement issues. I have got a response tonight from Gareth Williams, the Cabinet member. He said he was sorry to hear that Buckingham Town Council experienced some difficulties. I think experiencing some difficulties is probably quite brief. I think these difficulties have been going on for some considerable time. It's all a public document. I will send it to the come-out today. He also says that he's appointed a new, a new enforcement officer to to take on these caseworks. So that's good. The poor person's got a hell of a mountain to climb. He also states that, you know, other parishes, however, these bulletins are stopped a year ago. And these are not viable options. Well, the bulletins that you used to receive were invaluable for the town council to be able to judge whether enforcement work, casework was taking place in the area. Of course, under the regulations, you can't comment on enforcement work. But you do need to be informed. So I, I, the minutes, it's in the, now being published tonight, so it's in the public domain. The response, along with all my other written questions, which we won't go into tonight. Only that I did ask a question about the assets of the council and how they were going to manage those. But that might affect us if there was a planning application on assets belonging to Buckinghamshire Council. You know, I did give them the asset lift. So we are where we are. Now, on enforcement cases, I am currently always in the process of following things up and have cases with them. So I hope that's useful to you. It's a shame that other members aren't here from Buckinghamshire Council tonight who may wish to comment on the motion and may wish to give their support for it, and may wish to comment on the enforcement issues. I can't speak for them. But unfortunately, they're not here. I hope that they will be minded to support the motion. If, even if it's amended, support the amended motion. If you've got any questions, please ask them.
Thank you. Anyone, any questions of Robin on, under that item? No, thank you. Item nine-two, to discuss applications to be called in and which Buckinghamshire Council, which is to volunteer. I presume, Catherine, we can drop that item now, can't we?
It does already, from the next agenda.
Okay, so mine's free.
For the minutes, that I am relieved that I hope after taking the motion through council last year and changing the constitution, it is everything that I want. I know councillor Harvey is still deeply sceptical of that it will be everything we want, which is, I think, is a good position to hold. I've got to be optimistic because I stood up in the council chamber and argued the case. So he's every right to be sceptical, and I think it'd be worth knowing what he thinks.
Yeah. Over to you, John.
I'll be Mr. Optimistic on this one. I think we may find it possibly worse. But let's wait and see. Let's evaluate it. We've got to move, we've got to build our decisions on data. And therefore, let's see how the data bears out.
Thank you. Catherine?
We did have one call, we wanted to call then from the last meeting. No such Shire councillors took it up. I have already done it on my behalf. Officer has acknowledged receipt of it. And in future, I will incorporate the call-in request in our response because it will always be an opposed response with reasons. So I will put at the bottom, for these reasons, we would like it called in. And that's, that's what we've agreed to do. So.
Thank you, Catherine. So that's now going to be our future. Item nine-three, updated list of undecided opposing call-in. Anyone got any questions? Catherine, any comment to make on the list?
No, except that I've taken to putting new information red. So that if it's in red on the list, it's new information, and I will strike it into black for the next time, so that we're always up to speed.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's very useful for us, that list. Excellent. Item ten, Buckinghamshire Council committee meetings. Just to note that both the North Bucks and the strategic meetings were cancelled. Presumably for lack of business, or I think as Robin's told us in the past, lack of trained staff. Robin?
Yeah, on the optimist side, I was sent as preference of invitations to click on the other day for future planning meetings. So they are planning future planning meetings. So I should imagine it's that there's a whole load of new councillors who haven't had any planning training. And there's a whole new batch of people. Of course, we're juggling where we're going to be. I'm looking forward to the first meeting of this this year of the council. And I'm sure it will be as interesting as the ones we briefly had last year where we managed to oppose an application in Mays Morton, which was agreed. So I think it'll be interesting. I am, on a personal note, I am very concerned with the strategic development control, that there is such a slim membership of North Buckinghamshire on it. That really just concerned me. That means we really have to have a really good, as a town council and other interesting parties like Buckinghamshire, we really need to build up a good communication with the officers because clearly, my view with the Mays Morton application as a councillor, they missed a trick on that application. They should have gone for deferral. If they'd have gone for deferral to the Vale Plan had been agreed, they may have actually held that up. But then that's my, I'm always looking for the gain as a political gain out of an application for the public. And, and I think it was refusal, and again, the chairman's vote carried that one. So we have to see what happens. And of course, the next big application will probably be Ozy Way in Buckingham. There's some synergies, isn't there, between the two? So we'll see how that goes. But I do think we're going to have to make sure that we're crisp, sharp, and ensured that the strategic development control know that thing. With the local members on the other planning committees when they meet, you have an advantage that they'll have local knowledge. So that'll bring to bear in the meeting. But we can't criticise members for not living in Buckingham for a start, but we need to make sure that they're given the knowledge.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you very much for that. Enforcement to report any new breaches. John, I think you wanted to raise the scaffolding.
Yeah, there's been some fairly, we've got something wrong with the sound tonight. I don't know what's up with it. Anyway, there's been some fairly hot debate about the scaffolding outside the old British House Foundation shop. This was put up, I believe, according to Warren, without permission. It's not compliant with access. I believe, I'm no, obviously, I'm no scaffolding expert, but I would have thought it would have been impossible to widen the scaffolding reach, so that people with, you know, with various buggies of various kinds could have got through there a lot quicker. Even just the bits of wood that are sort of done one way, they'd gone the other way. That might have created a bit more space as well. It just seems to be put up without any care and concern. And for quite a while, it was put up without there being any contact number on the scaffolding as well. It's now up there for people to be contacting them and so on. But I'm just not sure what the situation is, you know, what permissions are required. And if they weren't complied with, why on earth is it still up there? You know, where's enforcement when we need it, as it were?
Thank you. Robin?
Yes, thank you, John, for raising it. The, I have personally raised this, both with planning enforcement and with highways. Now, I think I copied Catherine into that correspondence, but out of courtesy. But I think what they were suggesting, that it wasn't a planning issue, it was a highways issue. And the correspondence suggested that they were going to go and talk to them about making the scaffolding compliant. Now, what they didn't say in that was they were going to make them take it down and put it back up again. They were discussing if I'm, and it is a week or two back, John, so please bear in mind I have a lot of correspondence. It was a week or two back, and I believe they said they were going to see about taking the ends off so people could get through it. Now, I'm not sure whether that is the real answer, John, because buggies and wheelchairs are different wits. So if there's furthermore correspondence, and Catherine, nod if I did copy you into it. If I didn't copy you into it, I should have done.
Yes, you did.
If you can circulate that correspondence to councillor Harvey and the other members, if there's anything additional to that that we need to say, please come back to me.
Thank you, Robin. Councillor Davis?
Thank you. I think that when it was initially raised, the photos that were put up on Facebook of it, there was a cross brace across either end of the scaffolding. So you couldn't actually walk underneath it. I believe when I went that way a week or so ago, that cross brace had been removed and it was cross-braced higher up or along the length of it rather than the width of it. But I may be wrong.
Thank you.
I think, I think they have made some changes.
Right. Councillor Harvey? Right. Councillor Harvey?
Martin wants to speak as well, but yes, just to reply to what Fran's saying is, yes, there was a diagonal cross brace that was put in initially, which meant that you couldn't even walk through it at all, let alone people in buggies or, or whatever. So that was removed, but that's still not sufficient. I, I think the council should write to maybe, you know, the authority looks after, you know, pavements as well as roads, and that's the transport, the transport for bucks, and say, what are people supposed to do in this instance? You know, where is there, you know, are people allowed to put up, you know, whatever scaffolding willy-nilly, and effectively block it off for a good proportion of, of the community? I don't think that's right or fair. Surely, there should be some standards. Were standards, you know, followed? And if they weren't followed, how are they going to force the standards to be followed in the future? And indeed, with this particular item, I think we need to find out the situation of this.
Thank you. Councillor Frank?
Yes, thank you. Just, oh, this, this audio tonight is dreadful. Just a quick Google, it does say that you do need a licence to erect scaffolding on a public highway, section 169 of the Highways Act of 1980. So, you know, that's just a quick scan of it, but it looks as though that's what they, they should have done. And obviously, they would have to have erected it in a suitable and friendly manner as well.
Thank you. Catherine?
I believe the email Rob copied me to. They did have a licence, but it was for High Street, because a lot of people think that our shops are all on the High Street. So they, they, they probably looked at the width of the pavement in High Street and said it's absolutely fine. What I'll do, I'll go down tomorrow and I will actually take photographs to prove that that double step is just not negotiable for buggies and things. You don't want to be driving through a loading bay. And the, I think the answer is that they have to put a fence out into the loading bay with barriers to, to let people around, use, use the roadway. I mean, clearly, for, for stability, you can't have too narrow a scaffolding, because it, it wouldn't stand right. So I think that that's what they need. But yes, certainly, we need to talk to people about, I mean, if they didn't even put a notice up to whom to contact in case of accidents and things, then they're obviously not as efficient as they might be.
Thank you. Fran? Councillor Davis?
Hello. Yeah, you can't, you can't put A-boards etc. out on the pavement without having a licence to do so. And they're, they're things that can be quite easily moved, not a structure that is fixed the building and has been there for several weeks. Have they actually done anything to the roof yet?
Good question.
Yeah. Catherine, thank you very much for that. We'll, we'll leave that in your hands. Any other enforcement matters?
Can I ask, if it circulates that email so that members can see exactly what was said, so that if there's any additional questions that I need to take up, but, but it looks like if Catherine follows it up, I'll work with Catherine on that rather than two of us chasing it.
Thank you. Thank you, Robin. Carolyn, sorry?
Yes, it's not really an enforcement issue, but the, the society, and Cathy Robyn's in particular is taking the lead on this, is really attempting to get parking in front of the old town hall removed. And seeking has sought the support of Villiers Hotel themselves, who are ecstatic about the idea of not having cars parked in front of their building. Apparently, it has caused some loss of business, as you might imagine. And so the society is taking this forward as a campaign to try and remove parking from that front of the town hall with planters and some sort of permanent structure that can be temporarily removed, should there be a wedding, for example, but will not make it a free-for-all for parking.
Thank you. Robin?
I, I, you're, you're, you're right to pursue this. On the action list, which was earlier, it, it, it was down for councillor White to come back with an update. He may have had an update and not come back, or he may have had no update and not been able to come back. So we can't judge that. But it's not our land, but it might be something that perhaps we could, you write to the town centre and events committee, who have had adequate interest with planters in the recent weeks, whether there's, whether there's some connotation through the town clerk, that we could have a discussion about those matters being able to put in, being maintained and being watered. Because putting planters up there, somebody's got to maintain them, and, and, and we, we struggled for years to do that. So I think it needs to go to the town clerk, and then the town clerk will look at it and see whether we can discuss it at events, the way of assisting in this. But there's all them legal niceties round it, which is, you know, what's the problem? Everybody's been trying to get that area sorted out for so many years now. I remember walking around with councillor Smith many years ago, and councillor Mari, when we did the clutter signage in the town centre and got a lot of that removed, it was even discussed back then, and that's five or so years ago. So, you know, this is, it seems to be an insolvable problem that nobody really wants to take ownership of. If, if you've got a way forward, and through the town clerk, we can do that legally, through that committee, write to the officer, and then maybe there's a way forward. But I can't speak for the committee. I can only speak for my own views.
Thank you, Robin. Fran?
Just wondering, are there double yellow lines around the outside of that, that area in front of the town hall?
Yes, there are.
Does anybody know?
Zigzags.
Right, and that, in, in that case, there's been some issues up at Silverstone Wood, where people have been given parking tickets for parking in the area, which has been used for, as long as I know, as, as a car park, yeah. Because apparently, the WLO lines relate to the land within, I can't remember the, the exact detail of it, but behind, like off, off the actual carriageway, the WLO line still apply. So that might be something worth looking at.
Thank you. Anthony?
I believe outside the town hall, it's actually zigzags, not yellow lines. It's part of the zigzagging, you know, the white zigzagging to do with, to do with the adjacent pedestrian crossing.
Yeah. Okay.
Presumably, I'm like, that means you're not parking.
Correct.
Thank you.
It is pretty hairy round there. People are coming on and off it, and you're trying, either, if you're trying to drive around the roundabout or walk across there.
Probably the logical thing is if the town clerk could open dialogue, of course, with the owners of Villiers, it would benefit them, of course, if, if we can keep that clear of non-hotel, non-town hall traffic, except, as you say, having removable tubs or barriers for their wedding days, and, and when they have a function, they need to get vehicles into. Catherine did point out at our briefing this afternoon, there was a side entrance which vehicles can unload in. Are we leaving that to the town clerk then? Paul?
We will, happy to.
Good solution. Thank you, Carolyn, for raising that. Next item, 12, applications to fell trees. That's just the running, running thing. Thank you for that, Catherine, 20 and 21. Item 13, section 106, quarterly update. Again, thank you for that, Catherine. Anyone got any comments on that? Robin?
Yeah, it, it appears, if you look in the Lace Hill development, large sections of the amount for flood alleviation hasn't actually been committed. You may or may not be aware of the situation at Lace Hill with the balancing pond, and, and the fact that there's an enforcement case going on about the small balancing pond to do with the industrial area. It might be a good thing to do is to seek to reallocate this money back to the, or, or ring fence it for maintenance of that, that area, because the area of the balancing ponds on Lace Hill is very poorly maintained. The big pond, if anyone goes and looks at it, the area of the new balancing pond, they've got to put a whole new planning application in because they built it wrong. We raised an enforcement issue through the residents' association. So, so it might be worth, as I mean, flood alleviation. At the moment, the residents of Lace Hill have contributed quite adequately to external matters in the town, like the swamp pool, the cycleway, and numerous other things, and they have management charges. Is there some way we could ring fence that money at the moment to cover the costs of the balancing ponds per se? It seems a laudable thing to do, because that money's come out of the residents' house charge, that if it's spent somewhere else in the town, that would be another case of money from Lace Hill being moved to do something else, where those balancing ponds were to alleviate flood, flooding in the town. You know, so I don't know what members think about that, but it, it would just seem something we should, it's just look at, even if it's not possible to do.
Yeah. Paul?
So is this the line, the first line on Lace Hill for flood alleviation, where it says the money's been committed? And there's none of that?
There's none of that.
But if it's been committed, if it's been committed, that means they have ordered something from it. So there isn't any money left available? Now, we can, we can inquire to clarify what it's been committed to, but I'd be surprised if there was any money in reality that we could get hold of or anything else.
Well, I, I mean, we had enforcement before, but I mean, it does seem if that's committed to something external to the estate, we need to know what it is, because those residents up there are, are, are suffering quite tardy experiences with those balancing ponds. And there isn't, as I say, another application going in for that. So the small balancing pond doesn't say anything about, anywhere about that. I see it's marked in green. That's what you're referring to, Paul. But it just seems very, we, we need to know where it's sent, because if it's gone to solve flooding problems in Marsh Gibbon, perhaps it wasn't a good use of it. And I did see that there's a post on Facebook about doing something on the environment committee agenda about the Ford today. So, but that land belongs to Buckinghamshire Council, so I don't know quite how we could take ownership of the Ford, because it's highways both sides, but.
Yeah, just off the subject there.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we need to at least find out what they spent it on.
Yeah. Could we ask Paul to do that? Is it possible, Paul, if you could ask what that 98,616 has been committed to?
Yeah, absolutely. We can clarify that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for raising that, Robin. That's a very, very valid point. Anyone else? Anything on section 106? Anthony?
Sorry, if I could just revert on to the town hall and correct myself for the record. I indicated there were zigzag lines, which indeed there are in front of it, to a midway point. They then turn into double yellow lines that curve around into Castle Street. I just had a little look on street scene. Oh, well, Fran and I are half right and half wrong.
Item 14, street naming. To receive information on street naming maps for revised housing numbers, north and south areas of Tindrit Road developments. Catherine, perhaps you could talk us through this?
Well, you remember that we had earlier in the year, applications to add extra houses in. Well, this is the definitive list now of postcodes and street names. They, when they were faffing about putting the extra houses in, they deleted some streets in the southern area to, to fit the gaps in. Well, they've been reinstated.
Fine. This has been approved, have they, by Buckinghamshire Council?
Yes, and I have passed them to Amanda, so for the new town map.
Thank you very much. That's really helpful. Yeah, the new town map, very good point. The current one doesn't yet show the Tindrit Road roundabout, yet, yet alone St. Monbold.
Well, I mean, because we, we do them alternate years, you see, so that one's quite old now.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, the, the town map generally drifts out of events at, at some point, for some reason. It's always been there. But it, it, it might be something that perhaps, I don't know why it was, there was a spending code at one point in events which paid for it. So I think it's something we need to look at, because the town has changed a lot since that map and will change. Could I just ask a question for you, Chairman? Have we got the, on that new section on the opposite side to the Tindrit Road main body estate, have we got the breakdown of the numbers of the houses in there? Are they on twos to three bedrooms? Because I've lost sight of that.
I can dig that out for you tomorrow.
You know, because I mean, that, we did make some comments, I believe, correct me if I'm right, Catherine, about making sure there was some affordability in there.
There are affordable houses. They're not in big clusters, they're dotted about. And I can do you a housing breakdown tomorrow. I've got them on file.
Yeah, thank you. It's just, I, I know you keep a really tight rein on these things to make sure we don't lose anything.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. And the town, the town map costs us nothing. We do it every two years. Amanda and I keep an eye on new, new road names and things like that, and check the index assiduously, because they've been known to make errors on it.
Thank you, Catherine, for that. And 14-2, to receive for information, the map of Cornwall's Meadow Care Home. The yellow part, Clarendon House, is the care home, and the flats, 14 flats, are going to be called Regent's Gate. Again, that, that's a, that's a done, is it, Catherine?
That's a project. Yes, that's what I've done.
Robin?
Just a question, Chairman. Is Regent's Gate owned by the monarchy? It, it suggests was Regent's Gate. Isn't it in London, Regent's Gate? Isn't it part of a palace in London? I, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm not great. I've not lived in many palaces, so forgive me if my knowledge of palaces are, are slick.
Regent Street is a street between Oxford Circus and Piccadilly Circus. It's not royal at all.
Yeah, and Regent's Gate is actually in Regent's Park, which is not, not a royal park, so.
Oh, that's all right. It's just, we've been here before with rural names in Buckingham, if you remember.
No, that, that one's not privileged.
Yeah. Carolyn?
I'd check.
Clarendon House might be, but that, that part, I just wondered if below Clarendon House, leading into Regent's Gate, there's, there's a road. Does that have, have to have a special name? Is that for naming? I mean, because it's not really part of Cornwall's Meadow.
Well, it will count as Cornwall's Meadow, because Clarendon House, Cornwall's Meadow will do for the main building, you see, and Regent's Gate, Cornwall's Meadow, is just the same as any of the closes off Page Avenue, for example, so.
Okay. Well, I, I just thought that because it was grand ocean land, a really good name for that little bit of road would be Canal Turn.
Regrettably not. As I say, it is private land, and this is what's agreed, and Tessa has not asked for a, a name for that wide road, so it's all Cornwall's Meadow, which will finally make somebody realise that Cornwall's Meadow is a road and not just a car park.
Right. In, in the High Street, or in Marketplace, or in Stratford Road, who knows?
Oh, God.
Thank you very much. Catherine, thank you for those maps. Very, very helpful. Item 15, matters to report any damage, superfluous or redundant signage in the town, access issues or other urgent matters. Robin?
Just, just, would we, we had a gentleman come to the public session. Many of those things we are dealing with, but should we not just note them in this, that, to say that we have discussed those things and put something in, in, in this area, Chairman, just to reassure him that we took note of what he said?
Yeah, thank you. He did, of course, talk about dropped kerbs, didn't he, on Tindrit Road and Ozy.
Is that a reasonable suggestion?
Yeah, and also, of course, some under-access issues. He mentioned about the pedestrian lights, which are not visually disabled friendly.
Yes.
How would we raise that, Catherine?
I think I'll have to tell the area technician to send it to appropriate Department of TIEP.
Thank you. Is that, everyone's happy with that? Thank you, Robin. I've got one to raise. Stratford Road, eastbound, as you come up the hill, the lollipop lights are flashing again. They have been for three or four weeks. We managed to get these stopped after six months, but they started again now. So we're getting near to the end of term anyway. So we don't want to waste electricity through the summer. If that could be reported. Robin?
Just to report, I reported some fly tipping on the Badgers Estate. I had a response back to say that they were aware of it. This is brick that's being put into the brook between Franciscan and the area of the circular walk. You know, the walk along the back of Badgers, which councillor Barnett at the time, and Mike Smith and all them did all the paperwork on many, many years ago and got funded for the circular walk. So it's there. I've reported it, and they said they're going to do something at some point. But also, there was some fly tipping on the London Road. I reported that as well. I found the other fly tipping, why I couldn't find the first. But we need to be wary of this, sort of, with the cost of taking stuff to the dump. And if you take bricks and stuff to the dump, it's very, very expensive to get rid of. But we don't really want our dishes and things being filled up with debris because it's only when it eventually does rain again, when it will keep raining for a month, that we'll find out where all these debris is. You know, Tindrit, on the London Road, it's right over the top of an entrance to a drain. And there, it's right on an out for that. That out for that river is the major bit going down to the brook, right where the otters station themselves. And it comes out from up in the spinia Ozzot Way, where they're going to challenge the life of the dormice. So from one end of that to the other end, there are species of interest. And kingfishers are apparently habitat some of that area as well. So we do need to keep a watch on these things. If any other resident members find anything, please report it. It's all down to the cost of taking stuff up to the dump. I'm always surprised what you pay for and what you don't pay for. I seem to pay for almost everything I take up to the dump these days.
Thank you, Robin. Right, number 16, chairman's items for information. I have two. Some of you will know, others may not, that Hazrat Hussain Haz, who's been our parish's liaison officer down at ABDC and then Buckinghamshire Council, has, he's now moving on, has moved on. Haz has been a huge help to Buckingham. He's always been there for us. I know that Paul and Catherine have both separately, or Robin, rather, Robin and Catherine have separately thanked him. But I would ask this committee to, if we could formally thank him on behalf of Buckingham Town Council Planning Committee for all the assistance he's given us over the last two or three years. He has been an absolute boon to us. If we could, John, thank you. Yeah, everyone's happy with that. Robin?
I'll send another officer, which is leaving the authority, which I found out today. I actually wrote, I'm going to write back to her personally because she's been a great assistance in my dyslexia in helping me basically call applications and things. But I'll send it through to Catherine tonight because it could be that we should have probably... I don't want to say her name in this meeting, but she's had a huge responsibility in the council over a number of years. And I think that maybe we should give a response to her. But she has been really good supporting me with my dyslexia over the years and has a great understanding of it. So from my point of view, over the above any disagreements we may have had, she's always been what I thought a worthy person.
Right, well, if you could pass it on to Catherine. Thank you very much, Robin. What I'm proposing tonight is a chairman's item that we thank Haz. The only other item I have is that myself and councillor Ozbegone are going to parish's planning briefing at Green Park at Aston Clinton on Thursday. It's a full day session, and hopefully, we will come back somewhat the wiser. Addie's not actually on our planning committee, but he is on the North Bucks area planning committee representing Buckingham East. So I think we should get some very useful information out of that. Date of next meeting, Monday, 16th of August. And with that, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Geoff. Good night. Good night.
Thanks a lot. All the best.
Get me home, everybody.